I'd like to call the Manchester Community School Board meeting to order. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To unify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do a roll call since some people are joining us virtually. We'll start with you, Mr. Shaw.
Oh.
Ruth Ayers, I'm present. Mr. Flack?
Present.
Mr. Bedekey?
Present.
Mr. Turflinger?
Present.
Mr. Hensley?
Present.
Mr. Espisat?
Present.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Emergency additions or deletions? Are there any more besides the ones that are listed there?
There are not. What is listed is what is accurate for right now.
All right, then, is there any hearing of patrons? Does anybody want to speak to begin our board meeting? Recognition, that's a deletion.
Actually, Dr. Lippi is going to talk about that real quick.
So.
I don't think, I don't think that mic's on, sorry.
Check, check.
There you go.
So, we had, we've delayed the player, the drama until January. And so, you know, we did kind of want to just give you kind of a recap on how the athletic seasons have been going, how they ended in the fall. We didn't really get much of a recap in November. And just to kind of talk about how things are going currently coming into the winter season. And so, Eric Skreten, our athletic director, would be here tonight, but he's got two other events going on right now. Junior high basketball game on the other end of this building. And our high school is getting ready to host Huntington North here for a girls' basketball game. Well, actually, they'll be starting about 15 minutes, and that's where I'm headed after this little update. So, just kind of give you a recap on the fall athletics. You know, kid, it just, I want to tell you, first of all, the parents have just been so thankful for what we have been able to roll out. And we have kind of, you know, navigated this crazy COVID pandemic, you know, set of cards that we've been dealt this fall. But for the most part, kids had a great experience. Just kind of run down some of the, how some of these teams finished up. Our eighth grade football team, for the first time since I've been here, were RRC champions. They went 6-0. And that's kind of combined seventh and eighth grade. Seventh grade also had some games. They enjoyed a pretty good season, but they kind of combined, several of those kids go both ways. And so, they had a great season. Our boys varsity soccer team went 8-9-1 and ended up being TRC champions. Our girls varsity soccer had a phenomenal season. They went 11-5. They were also TRC champions and sectional runner-up. Boys cross country had, enjoyed a great season with the semi-state, 20th at semi-state, fifth at regionals, fourth at sectionals. Our girls cross country had six invites. They were fourth at sectional and seventh at regional. So, again, just, you know, that's just become kind of part of the course for our cross-country teams. They did a great job. Junior high teams had had a phenomenal season as well. Girls varsity volleyball, you know, they were certainly playing some of their best volleyball toward the end of season and probably the best under that we've had for a while. They actually won an invite, Eastbrook. And so, they're, I think they're looking forward to the future, just keep, they're improving. You know, probably one of the highlights of the fall was our unified flag football team. This was initiated, I believe it was two years ago by the IHSAA. This is the third season. This is the second season that we've competed in this. I don't know if I've been a part of a more, just a better experience than that. I've been involved with two state titles, Huntington North and Gimp Town. And this would probably be one of the highlights that I've ever been around as far as sports go. We got these kids, they finished in the final four in the state. They finished runner-up at regional, they were sectional champs. And I'm just so proud of all the kids that are involved that are gen ed kids or identified kids. It is just phenomenal. So, that fall season, we just had a great experience. So, we appreciate being able to do that. We didn't take that for granted because some schools just didn't have that experience that we've come to expect each fall. Moving into winter sports, you know, we've had some games that we've had to postpone. We've picked up some new opponents, but overall, our kids have a great experience. Our high school girls team kind of started off a little rough, but now I believe it's a three-game win streak. I think it's three-game win streak now, three and four. And they've got, they're pretty well full, full back to full strength. They're getting close to full strength here tonight and maybe the coming up. The JV team had a phenomenal game last night. I don't know if I've seen a better JV girls' basketball game. They won in overtime. Very exciting. A lot of those kids just keep getting better and better. You know, boys just got started. They're currently 0-2, but they really, they were knocked out, like four of their top nine kids, but they're coming back to full strength. So, expect, you know, some really good things out of them coming forward. High school wrestling has been getting started. You know, traditionally, we've had a really strong program. And they had some illnesses early, but I think they're going to, they're starting to come back out of this, too. Just a statement from Mr. Skreten. He said, "We're super busy almost every night with athletic competitions and the constant rearranging of events due to COVID impacting everything and everyone. We're consistently monitoring each team's situation with coaches, the nurse, principals." I love, thank MA for all that work, not just the schools, but she's helping with all the extracurriculars as well. And she's here with us tonight. The principals, the athletic department, we're hanging in there, but we're keeping Squire Athletics moving forward. I'll tell you, parents are so thankful that we're able to keep going, what we're able to, I just, you can just feel that with them. And so, we don't take it for granted. Kids' safety will always be first and paramount, but this experience is vital. And I know our families are very appreciative of what we're able to do. Financially, we've taken a hit. I mean, when you limit a crowd to two per participant, you're going to take a financial hit. And so, you know, we've got to be real careful and just, you know, we might order that next set of uniforms maybe next year or the year after. We've just got to be cognizant of that. Equipment, you know, we've just got to be careful with that. We are losing a little bit of money as far as paying officials, game workers. I would say, you know, it's enough to break the bank, but, you know, we just have to be really mindful and efficient with their funds. So, certainly, we're reaching out, anybody that might be tuned in online for, you know, any financial help. Donations are accepted, we appreciate that. I want to give another shout out, and I know we've done this, but I can't tell you how much we appreciate Randy Self and his team for putting together live streams for these contests. That's unbelievable. We are certainly leading the pack on that. Serena, I want to thank you and your crew all the time, just tons of time that he's put in putting that together. It's just a first-class operation. And again, we appreciate any donations that people make through that. We're not doing pay-per-view, but we're accepting donations if people feel so moved having that service offered to them. So, just very appreciative of what we have to this point. So, that's kind of the report from athletics to this stage.
And I would just, also just say a thank you to A.D. Eric Skreten because he has put in countless hours to make sure the programs keep running. And he's done a phenomenal job. So, very, very thankful that we are blessed with him.
John, John, one thing, I know you didn't mean to, but I know Coach Slopp gets in here to swim in.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Sorry, I was going to say, yes. You know I was going to miss one. Sorry. And I'll tell you what, we've been looking forward to this year, too, haven't we, Heidi? I mean, you've got two elite swimmers, but the whole team, you've got probably your largest numbers that you've had since you've coached, boys and girls. And it's exciting. Kind of had, we've kind of had some of our own COVID issues, but they're starting to come out of that now. So, we're, we're really excited. And I thank you so much for reminding, we don't, we don't want to miss, miss the opportunity to brag on our swim teams because they're, they're, we've been looking forward, we've been talking about this season coming up here with now Hallie being a senior, Jones and Josie now sophomore, and then all the other complimentary swimmers around them. Real excited for this year. So, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Dr. Lippi. All right, we're going to go to consent items. Typically, we vote on the consent items as a group. Is that true, or did we change them? Is that true? And we always read the donations just to make sure that we name that. So, this month, there's been a donation of $200 to MES from Santa Fest. Oh, I'm sorry. A donation of $200 to MES Santa Fest from Kappa Kappa Kappa. A donation of $150 to the MJSHS Key Club and JAG Program from the Sloppson family. Donation of $50 to the MJSHS Athletic Program for audiovisual expenses from Connie Hall. Donation of $250 to MJSHS Athletic Program for audiovisual expenses from Post and Plumbing Services. Donation of $300 to MJSHS Athletic Program, audiovisual expenses, cash, from an anonymous donor. Donation of $400 to MJSHS Boys Tennis Program from an anonymous donor. Donation of $600 to MJSHS Boys Basketball Program from McKee Mortuary, Mortuary Incorporated. And a donation of $2,850 to the MJSHS Art Collection from the North Manchester Fine Arts Endowment. And just each month, we always have many generous donations, and we're quite grateful for that. So, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll go. I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Flack and a second by Mr. Hensley. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, we have to do a voice vote because of, because we're in all different places. So. Mr., Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Bedekey?
Yes.
Mr. Turflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Espisat?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We're now in recommendations for approval, 5.1, policy 3250, teleworking.
Yes, and this is a second reading for this, and those are for people working at home, staff members working at home. This does not include teachers. The teachers were, we went through discussion with that, and they're comfortable with their arrangement. And this would be for all of those other staff members. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve policy 3250?
So moved.
It's a motion by Mr. Flack. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Turflinger. Is there discussion? All those in favor, I'll go first. I vote yes. Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Bedekey?
Yes.
Mr. Turflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Espisat?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. A recommendation for the approval of Manchester youth programs.
And this is for our boys basketball biddy program as well as our wrestling program. They've done this in the past, and they're just asking to continue to do that.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll take, I'll make a motion.
It's a motion by Mr. Hensley. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Flack. Is there discussion?
Has there been any extra COVID protections taken into consideration for this or the other youth program that we approved, I believe it was last month or the month before?
They would actually be following the same guidelines we use for our athletic programs now. Can you not hear me? They are following the same guidelines that we have used for all of our athletic programs, so yes.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is wrestling, all that skin-to-skin contact and, I mean, does the state use any guidelines for wrestling?
Yes, and that's part of our plan that we use, so yes.
Thank you. Wrestling's always typically have, you know, strict guidelines for any type of skin infection. And I've mentioned that this, you know, these youth ports are critical for our kids when they do get to high school. The success at a high school level is based on these youth programs, so thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Bedekey?
Yes.
Mr. Turflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Espisat?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Could we do 5.3 and 5.4 together, or do you want them separate?
Separate, please.
Okay, no problem. So, 5.3, approval of the quote to replace two boilers at MES.
Yeah, so you're aware, board, we, these next two items, 5.3 and 5.4, both of these have been discussed with our finance and facility committee and comes with their recommendation. Also, Jack Ruplee, our maintenance director, has been consulted on this and would come with his recommendation as well. We did get quotes to replace the two boilers at the Manchester Elementary School, and that also quotes to replace the two water heaters. Our recommendation for the 5.3 to replace the two boilers at MES would be Vans Contracting. And their quote, as you can see up there, for the boilers alone are $98,731. We did have another quote from another vendor. Let me pull that here. If you combine the boilers and the water heaters total price, this quote would be $159,934 to do both projects. Our other quote came in at $199,000, so about $40,000 more than what Vans quote was. And so, again, this was discussed in our finance facility committee and again with Jack Ruplee. And all feel comfortable moving forward with your approval for Vans to do the boiler quote here at $98,731. It's important that also that you know that this work would take place at the end of the school year, when school is out. But it is important to get this price locked in right now because after the first of the year, materials are going to go up, as indicated by everyone that we got quotes from. And so, we'd like to lock this price in with your approval, and then they can get those ordered and have them on hand. And, you know, should barring something crazy happen and they would quit working in March, we'd have them and they could get to work on them. But the plan is to get them installed right at the end of school and be ready then for the next school year. So, asking for your approval for this first one on the two boilers.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's a motion by Mr. Turflinger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Shaw. Thank you. Any discussion?
We are going to issue the purchase order before the end of the year, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we would issue the purchase order this week yet for these items. Also, I meant to add that I forgot to, we would use remaining bond monies that we took out for the roof to pay for this project, and we have those monies. Thank you. Is it, are we pretty much to a point where we're, I don't want to use the term breakeven, but facilities are to a level now where we don't have any unexpected cost in the future? I mean, that we know of, or? Yeah, we're actually going through that process and looking at things that we know coming down the road that we probably want to tackle. And we'll have a report on all of those type of things. But for the most part, we're beginning to be in better shape than that for sure. Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor, Mr. Bedekey?
Yes.
Mr. Turflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Espisat?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. 5.4, approval of the quote to replace two water heaters at MES.
Again, this quote comes with Vans as the lower quote of $61,203. So, again, asking for your approval. Basically, everything that I just described from the last quote is in play on this one as well. One, one thing that I would recommend for your approval as well, you can see there's an option to remove the existing water softener, which adds $2,400 to this quote. We currently have a water softener that's there that is not being used and according to Jack, hasn't been used for probably 15 years or longer. When it was purchased and put in, it worked, and then it quit working, and then the company went obsolete, and they weren't able to get the parts to fix it, never, never did anything with it. So, upon Jack's recommendation, he would just like to remove that water softener. We do not need to replace it or need it, just to get it out of there and free up more space in the boiler room area. So, my recommendation would be to include that additional $2,400 to that quote of $61,203 to have that removed when they do the work, with your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
I make the motion to approve the Vans contract with the option for the $2,400 recommendation to remove the water softeners.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Bedekey. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to add for the board, doing this project at the same time is actually an energy savings move at the same time because currently the boiler heats the hot water. So, with the new boiler and control system and the new hot water tanks, we'll be able to turn the temperature of the boiler down and save some money in the long run.
We got a calculated ROI on that, then? No. Oh, okay. Did, I mean, is the?
You missed the meaning.
Is the, is the 2,400, I mean, that's a necessity? We'll never use those block? Why do they have softeners to begin with? Yeah, I don't know. Back when they put them in, they used them to soften the water. But they're, they're non-functional at this point. They're just taking up space, and will never be used with what's in there. Jeremy, is this covered under the roof and bond? Yeah, still, still part of the bond monies from the roof that we have left.
All those in favor, Mr. Turflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Espisat?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Bedekey?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. And 5.5, farm cash lease bidding process.
Okay. What you had in your packet is the current contract that we currently have for that cash lease out by MIS. And so, as we talked in the past, we talked about making some changes to this contract. And with your approval tonight, here's some of the recommendations that I would recommend that we look at doing. And Mr. Franch, you can chime in here at some point, too, if you, if I don't cover it correctly. But currently, we have a year-to-year lease with what we've done with that property and that land from year to year. I'm proposing that we would do a four-year lease, have all the money paid upfront in that first year, and bid this out so that we're not dealing with it every year, we're dealing with it every four years. They can pay their money upfront, know what they've got. They've got the land for four years. If they want to do any improvements to it, they can do that. According to Mr. Franch, and again, chime in if this is wrong, according to information when we talked about this before, we would have to do a published notice to, that we're accepting bids for this property. We would then have to open the bids publicly, and then the board, you would award the lease to the highest and best bidder. We would have to set a minimum bid price and include that in the notice. And to do that, we have to get a fair market value, which means we would have to get that land appraised before we can put that out for bid and notice in the paper. Mr. Franch, anything to add? Is that accurate?
No, that's good.
So, my recommendation would be to make this a four-year lease with whoever the best bidder is, and go through the bidding process for this property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve Jeremy's recommendation on the farm cash lease bidding proposal.
There's a motion by Mr. Turflinger. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Bedekey. Any discussion?
If we decide, if there was a useful purpose for that land we wanted to do in the future, do we have an out on this contract within that four-year period, or we have to wait four years? It depends. I mean, we could, Mark, you want to chime in on that?
I would suggest if we make it a four-year lease, we do not put an out in it, especially if we want them to pay the rent price upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, do you have an estimated value?
I do not, no. We would have to get that appraised.
Can you share what we earn on it?
Currently, right now, the current lease for rent on it is $100 an acre, so $349 for the 3.49 acres.
You make, and we're assuming it's higher, it'll be a higher value with a four-year commitment?
Yes. And just given the opportunity for anyone in the community to bid on that, that property.
To your point, Mr. Espisat, Rick, though a farmer is farming it, and he doesn't want to put down lime on ground that he doesn't know he's going to be able to farm next year. In the long run, it benefits, you know, makes the school district a better steward of the land because the farmer knows he's got it for 40 years. He can go in and put the lime down, whatever fertilizer he needs, and he's going to get the full benefit versus not having, you know, just having the one-year contract kind of leaves him in limbo, so to speak.
Long reality, you're talking less money than 2,400 turnout boiler or softener.
All in favor, Mr. Hensley?
All right, so we're voting on this tonight?
Yes.
Yes, that is the motion.
I'll say yes, I guess.
Mr. Espisat?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Flack?
No.
Mr. Bedekey?
Yes.
Mr. Turflinger?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1. Thank you. Discussion and information, policy 2120, use of school facilities.
Yes, this policy, 2120, is already an existing policy. At the very bottom of it, we, as a committee, decided to add this sentence that says, "See school facility and building rental agreement form, F2120, to request facility use and to obtain fees, regulations, and procedures for the use of school facilities." So, prior to this, we had not posted our facility agreement form at all, so we wanted to make sure. so we wanted to make sure that everyone saw that upfront, knew all that was involved in that process. When we discussed as a committee, right now, we are currently not renting any of our facilities, so this was a really good time to kind of have this discussion. And what we found, that everybody was getting the facilities for free, and we wanted to make sure the community was able to continue to use it. But we also know that we are financially struggling right now, and so we were just trying to find a happy medium. Brown and Mike and Jeremy, please jump in if you want to add to this. So we were just looking at possibly for the Class II people to not charge for the first two hours, because most people that do rent the facilities are done within that timeframe. But we do have some that are in there for eight, ten hours, maybe. And all we're looking at is to try to cover the cost of staff that may have to come in and clean, because we're paying them overtime to do that. In some cases, we also are looking at our lights and our heating and all of those. We're just trying to be fiscally responsible, be able to review some of those costs, but still be cognizant of the community and their needs as well. So just trying to find a middle ground to help us to be responsible with that. So, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think one other thing that we looked at was in the past on the facility agreement contract. It just said that custodial expenses, food service expenses, could be a part of the fee, but it wasn't really spelled out, didn't give anything specific. So we tried to do that, and tried to give some specific dollar amounts, so that people could plan better for that, should they want to consider renting out for a longer period. That may need custodial support, or food service support, or something in the performing arts center that may need boards run and lights run for something special that maybe no one else could do. So we just tried to clean it up and make it a little more detailed as much as possible, and try to provide as much information as we could compared to the current structure that we have with.
Well, there's a lot of conversation, I mean, for what I look at it, the public owns these buildings to begin with, you know, and that was some of the conversation in policy. And there's a couple of groups that actually use these buildings that donate substantially to us. So we did have those conversations, and I'd still like to know that information, because I think at some point, there's some case-by-case decisions that need to be made on rental. So just to let people know, we did have those conversations. But I think people using our buildings, that's a form of engagement, you know, for MCS, but, you know, the cost as well, so.
And it could be something that, you know, during this financial struggle that we're going through right now, that two years from now, we look at it again, and then we change it based on the needs of the community as well. I mean, it's really up to the board on what you want to do. However, it was just a way to be able to recap some of those costs that are going out that, you know, we really need to be able to just break even on those times that are renting, so.
I have a couple of questions. I went through this thing a couple of different times. I didn't see a waiver process on the form, whether that would be up to the superintendent or the board, if it was a new group coming to town or something, or a group that was financially struggling, to where we had the opportunity, or the superintendent has the opportunity. I would like to see on the form a box where they could ask to be considered for a waiver. I guess I would say that that would be like a one-time deal. If they needed to use a facility, looking at the three and four categories. I didn't see anything in there for an employee discount, school employee discount. And one thing that wasn't too clear, I saw the fees for the use of the building, but then there was a place there for custodian or a technician for the pack. I was wondering if we could get some clarity there for the hours required for, like, say, a janitor. If the custodian shows up and opens the door, and somebody's got it from noon to six, does the custodian have to be there from noon to six? Are we paying them one hour? Are we paying them six hours? Same with the technician, I'm guessing with the technician, if somebody was renting the pack. You know, they're going to have, we're not going to let just anybody run the equipment. And then there was another, there's an asterisk on there that said, "MES, no restroom." Is that just for, when they're using the outside facilities, or is there, is that something left over on the form from before?
Yeah, I don't, that's a good one that we need to look at. It was on the old form, and I'm not sure why it was put there originally. But I don't know why, if it's just MES, why some of the other buildings wouldn't be listed there as well. So that's something we'll definitely take a look at.
I was wondering if we could send this back to the policy committee and get some, and maybe get some clarification. And I don't know, what's the rest of the board think? Do we want to put a waiver option in there? And there was one other one I missed here. Looks like the superintendent can approve this, but if it's on a Sunday, the board has to approve it. Is that because Sundays are overtime, or why the difference?
I don't necessarily know the history of that. I think maybe that was something that in the community, they felt that if a facility was going to be used on a Sunday, they wanted the board to approve that. Since it's typically a day where the schools are not open for anything, since athletics can't compete on Sundays and those type of things, as far as at the high school and IHSA level. So I guess I don't know the history of how that came about in our particular facility rental. I'm just assuming that they wanted the board to approve any Sunday rentals within our community, since that's not a typical day that schools function or have activities, where Monday through Saturday, you could have those activities. That's just a guess on my part.
And that's typical in most corporations that I've been involved with, that Sunday facility rental. My only concern with a waiver, Mr. Turflinger, is at some point, you have to draw the line. What is the line? And who is going to decide if they, I mean, everybody's going to think that they are the bad exception. So then where do you decide what is that exception? So just trying to think and be proactive to combat any controversy that may come of it. I mean, it's worth discussing. It's just one of the things that I thought of that would be a concern.
Do we have records of who used the facility in the past? I mean, back to our conversation we had on that, I mean, I'd like to know that information.
Yeah, yeah, we could dig up groups that have used it, or groups that maybe use it more consistently than others, for sure.
Mr. France, if we table this tonight and send it back to committee, does it come back as a first reading again?
It sort of like we make changes to policies, it comes back as a first reading?
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to have more information, you know, I mean, how big of a job would it be to do a comparison using, say, from March before COVID hit to the following March, going through the form, seeing how many times it was used, and what kind of revenue that we're looking at generating here? Was it used twelve times in a year? Was it used twenty times in a year? I mean, are we talking about twenty-five hundred dollars in income here, or twenty-five thousand?
I'm sorry, I thought you said that this wasn't about revenue, it was just about recouping the cost?
Yeah, that's all we're trying, we're just trying to pay for our employees for coming in and recouping our costs for heating and electric. We're not trying to make money off of it, in any way.
To me, that seems very practical and fiscally responsible, that if, no matter if I'm an employee of the school or a community member, if I come in and I use the facility for more than two hours, that I pay whatever it costs to light and heat and cool and clean up. I mean, I don't, I guess I don't really understand, since it's not really about revenue, it's just about fiscal responsibility, I guess I'm not quite following.
Well, I'm just kind of wondering where the prices came from. If we didn't look at the study on what it costs us to open the building, then how did we generate the fees that we're going to use? I mean, you know, there's three hundred and fifty dollars and a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the Class Four.
Yeah, and those were the amounts that have been charged. We didn't change those or do anything with those. Those were the amounts that have been in the rental agreement from whenever this was brought years ago.
So to wrap up the discussion, I think what I hear Mr. Turflinger saying is he wants this to go back to policy committee and have some addition to the forms and change the price. Is that what the wishes of the board is?
This is a first reading, correct?
Yeah, and so I think the thing is, is it go back to policy, things would be changed, and it would come back as a first reading.
In a sense, it goes back, the policy committee can evaluate what they heard tonight, and if changes are made, then it becomes another first reading.
Yeah.
That is our process, right? I mean, that's why we do a first reading.
Yes.
And if no changes are made, then it's a second reading next time.
Did I miss it, or did somebody answer the question about the custodian or the technician? Are they going to be required to be there, or is it on a case-by-case basis?
That would be a case-by-case basis. I guess it would depend on the group, what their function is, what they're using the facility for. Is it a group that's coming in to use the cafeteria? They're going to serve a meal and have food, and get the trash cans full and use the restrooms, and which would mean that a custodian would need to be there to take the trash out afterwards, clean the restrooms, and have it ready for the next day. Or is it a group that just needs the cafeteria space to conduct a meeting for an hour, and there's nothing, no food, no use of anything in and out, just someone needs to unlock the door? I can't imagine a charge for that.
Mr. France, would we need to have someone there at the facility at all times, just liability reasons-wise?
I would recommend at least one person there to monitor.
Typically, that's what I am accustomed to, so, yeah. I think it would be best if we would have someone there the entire time.
So I have a question. Dave, as part of your concern, you could put it in the email. What, I mean, I'm not sure what your concern is, is it the hourly rate that you're concerned about, or?
No, I just wondered how we came up with the rates, and my biggest thing was, is on that form, there's, and I spoke to Jeremy about this, it says technician, janitor, and then there's a calculation, if you look at your form there, there's a calculation for what you're using in the building, whether you're using the commons, the cafeteria, whatever you're using. But then down at the bottom, and it was just kind of unclear, okay, if somebody said some groups use the building for eight to ten hours. So, you know, that, ten hours, you know, you're looking at two hundred bucks on top of what you're using for the building. And I just wanted some clarification there on, you know, are we going to, do they have to pay for a janitor, or can the custodian, or a coach, maybe a coach is part of the group, he's got a key to the building, he shows up, opens the building, you know? Just looking for some, just a little bit more clarity for the people that are going to fill this form out, so that they know what their costs are going in.
Okay, because on the form where it says estimated costs, it does have hourly fee and then total personal cost. Maybe it should say number of hours used, that would help, probably. Is that what you're thinking?
And like I said, if the board decides that somebody needs to be there the whole time, then we need to make that clear to them, that it's just not an hour for cleanup and an hour for setup. It's somebody's going to be monitoring the building.
I'm with your detail. Biggest concern I have on this whole thing is relationships. This is an engagement vehicle with the public. So you take a, every month, I see they donate money to us. So are we going to balance what they donate to what we charge them, you know, and other organizations that donate to me? That's, just to be clear, that was by, you know, not the details of things. We didn't, in the policy, we didn't change these details. They, you know, those things have been in there how long? When's the last revision on this thing?
Oh, three, I think.
So I think, I mean, you guys are kind of down in the weeds on this thing, which is fine. But, you know, the bigger concern to me is these relationships that we have with some of these folks, and the fact that we have to do our due diligence to see what is it that they donate and what we're going to charge them, you know? So, I mean, the policy is what it is, you know, and we really can't cover that. And we are in, you know, we are in a tight time, so. And I think about this, and I think about how many times in the past I've used these buildings, and all in the benefit of our children, you know? That's the thing that, you know, concerned me with a lot.
But if it involves our children, we're not charging.
Okay, good.
That is not the charge, so.
So it sounds like this is going to go back to the policy committee, and it'll come back next month as a first reading. Is that clear? Okay. May we move on? Six point two, Heartland update, Mr. Turflinger?
I'm choosing to do this from here, because I want to be able to look at all of you, and I can't see you all over there. It's just on, you hear me? Okay. July nineteen sixty-nine, USA put a man on the moon. The Beatles released the album Abbey Road. And some folks got together in Long Bash, Indiana, and shared some ideas. And those ideas led to the creation of the Heartland Career Center, which opened in nineteen seventy-one, and is still serving students today, almost fifty years later. The vision shared by those folks in nineteen sixty-nine has led us here today to the highest enrollment and the most programs at Heartland ever. It's been a long and winding road. In twenty nineteen, some board members at Heartland voted to pursue a grant for the expansion of the campus. I would like to report on behalf of the Heartland Career Center board that the project is not only moving forward, something very unique in today's world happened, part of it happened here. The five-member school corporation superintendents all recommended approval of this expansion, and all five-member school boards voted unanimously and approved the project to go forward. From the Heartland Career Board and staff and myself, I wish to thank all of you for your vision and your support for this project. Thousands of students will benefit from this project in the next fifty years. And if the stars remain aligned, and with a little bit of luck, we'll be having a celebration of a new facility in December of twenty-one, in Heartland's fiftieth year. I'd like to thank all of you for your support. It was big.
Thank you, Mr. Turflinger. Six point three legislative update.
All kinds of things going in the legislature, but, you know, some Supreme Court denials on here in certain cases with, you know, some transgender rules. some transgender rules. I think the budget this year is going to, you know, there'll be a lot of, a lot going on there. I'm going to actually take a little trip out here to DC, you know, about, well, the end of this week to hear some of these things from a, from a, you know, bird's eye view, basically, I can say. But I think, you know, as we, as we struggle finance, you know, not struggle financially, but as we're, you know, as we're riding this wave out with this COVID, you know, a lot of, a lot of good signs on vaccine. So, you know, hopefully, a lot of the legislative activity, if we can conquer this virus, you know, within the next few months, you know, should, everything should clear up and hopefully funds will go where they need to flow. But, you know, there's a lot of, there's still a lot of uncertainty around things, so. Should, should, you know, within the next, by the next board meeting, you know, there should be clarity on what's, you know, what's going on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. It's part of our meeting for hearing of patrons. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? So please go to the mic and state your name. All right, recognition, Dr. Grimal.
Yes, we have three outgoing board members we want to recognize this evening. We'll start with Mrs. Ayers. Just did this in alphabetical order, so. Mrs. Ayers has served on the school board since 2017. She was brought in as the, from the educator perspective, which is much appreciated, and she conveyed her dedication by championing her support for administration, staff and students. She's appreciated for her leadership as the president for the last two years, acclimating a new superintendent, which is not an easy thing to do, and her devotion to providing necessary supports for students and teachers. Mrs. Ayers, we appreciate your service to our schools and the countless hours devoted to the Board. We wish you well with your future endeavors, whatever they may be, and you'll be greatly missed. So we have something we would like to pass on to you. Next is Mr. Bedke. He has served on the MCS School Board for the past four years. He is known for his sense of calmness in the midst of a storm. He is unwavering in his quest to make wise decisions that affect students and staff in a positive way. His quiet and calm demeanor has helped us all approach each decision with considering all perspectives and options before presenting a vote. Mr. Bedke, thank you for the past four years that you have served MCS. You are appreciated and will be greatly missed as well. And last but not least, Mr. Flack. He has served on our school board from 2005 to 2020. So his 15 years of service has been a blessing to our school district. His passion for staff and students has always been at the forefront of decision-making, even through the most challenging times. He is appreciated for his dedication to serving MCS through many changes and giving his very best to support the administration, staff and students. We wish him well on whatever he chooses to do with all his free time now, right? So, Mr. Flack, thank you for your service and you will also be greatly missed, so.
Thank you, Dr. Grimal.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Superintendent comments?
Yes, this evening I wanted to give a COVID update just so everyone knows where we're at and knows how we make those decisions. So when we started and we came back to school, we had two goals. To maintain a safe and healthy school environment and to minimize the prevalence of COVID-19 in our community. So when we consider a possible closure, we look at several factors. We look at staff fatigue and every day I'm walking around, talking to staff, seeing how they're doing. And typically, they all tell me they're exhausted, but they're so glad they're in school. So I'm glad to hear that from them. Staffing positions like subs shortages, are we short of people that can fill positions, whether it's food service, whether it's secretarial positions, teacher positions? So we look at all of those pieces. We also look at our absenteeism rate. And 20% is our magic benchmark number given to us by the State Board of Health. We have come a little bit close, but not really when we take out all of those close contacts that actually were not COVID-positive. We also look at our in-house transmission rate. Are we passing it from staffer to students, back and forth? And we also look at the research, and I'm going to share a little bit of that research with you this evening. On November 20th, the CDC Director, Dr. Robert Redfield, shared that his agency never recommended schools close in the spring, nor has he recommended that they do so now. And the truth is that kids K to 12, one of the safe, are one of the safest places they can be from, our perspective, is to remain in school. Today, there's extensive data that we've gathered over the last two or three months to confirm that K-12 schools can operate with face-to-face learning and they can do it safely and they can do it responsibly. On November 5th, one of the largest studies led by Brown University economist Emily Oyster, Ph.D., analyzed in-school infection data from 47 states over the last two weeks of September among more than 200,000 students and 63,000 staff members who had returned to school. They reported that the rate of was 0.13 among students and 0.24 among staff for infection rate. We have seen, we haven't seen any super-spreader events that ignited in schools. The fear that you, we've all had, that one kid infected another and came to school and then you have many kids and teachers infected just has not happened. School outbreaks typically come from the community, not vice versa. And we'll have MA share some of our data here in a minute. November 13th, there was a report from the Deputy State Health Commissioner and that stated that schools are the safest place for kids to be getting infected outside. They're getting infected outside the schools. Even in the influenza pandemic of 1918, the same conclusion was arrived at and they kept kids in school. There are profound mental health problems in Indiana and the United States, including increases in suicide attempts and suicide where there is no in-person instruction. Schools help decrease the food insecurity and increase nutrition if they say in-person. Schools play a critical role in addressing racial and social inequities. Schools are fundamentally to a child and adolescent development and well-being. Our local and state health department guidance, we receive that as well. We have weekly meetings with all of our area nurses, our superintendents. Dr. Rowe, who is our county health official. And then we also occasionally have Mayor Scott Long involved in those. We discuss athletics, extracurriculars, in-person versus virtual instruction, county positivity rate. We looked at, we've been in the red, so we've looked at that. And Dr. Rowe did check with the State Department on what qualifies schools to close. Their answer was it is really up to the school corporations and the county health officials on what they feel is necessary at the time in taking all of these factors into consideration and what's best for kids and what's best for staff. So one of the things that we did discuss this last week was after five days, and MA, correct me if I get this wrong, after five days of transmission, or after five days, the transmission rate is at 90%. Am I saying that correctly? Of the population is unlikely to get COVID. It's unlikely to transmit. After 10 days, it goes up to 97%. And then at 14 days, it's 100%. And that's why they recommend the 14 days. Now, right now, or they have just changed that recently, but as a county, we have decided to stay with the 14 days. We just feel like because we were in red, we felt like we really needed to stay there and try to keep everybody safe, keep them wearing masks, keep getting that message out about social distancing. And as of Sunday evening, Mayor Long did share an email with us that our positivity rate dropped from 17.9% to 12.6% for a county. So we are anticipating that we will be in the orange status tomorrow. So MA is going to take over from here and kind of share our school data and where we're at.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support. Somebody texted me and said I needed to watch a school board meeting and that was a little overwhelming for me, but thank you very, very much. I love what I'm doing and I think I'm helping, I hope. So where we're at with our numbers is something the principals haven't heard yet. Our attendance rate today, last week I did our, took a random day and did an attendance rate. And the two elementaries were running just under 10% and the high school was at 16.4%. And today, MES was at 4.8% absenteeism. MIS is 5.2%, and the high school is down to 10.4%. So, you know, it just, it wavers, but we're really working in a good spot. Our close contacts, I, I'm not a stats person, trust me. So I just did some counting last night. And close contacts like at MES that were school-related, we've had 33 up to date from the first day of school to last night. MIS has had four. The high schools had 72 and of staff across the corporation, we were at five. Those close contacts that are home-related or not school-related, MES has had 54, MIS has had 40, and the high school has had 111 and staff, I've had 25. So a lot of it is coming from the outside end, is what that's telling me. We're doing a nice job controlling within our environment. It's just what is coming in of what we're trying to, or fight against. So, and so another question came up was how many of those close contacts have actually converted to a positive? Because, you know, it's like, why are we doing this 14-day quarantine? Is it really necessary? Of school-related close contacts, those kids who have been out because they were identified at school as a close contact, I've had none at MES or MIS that have converted to a positive. I've had four at the high school and one staff member. And one of the cases at the high school was a boyfriend-girlfriend relationship that they were identified at school, but they also had a relationship outside. Those close contacts who have converted to a positive that are not school-related, I've had four at MES, one at MIS. We've had 10 at the high school and three staff members. So definitely, again, that shows that it's outside, or, I mean, not that we're not having it outside, but the bigger concern is what's happening in the community versus within the school. I want to say, I think a lot of our success has been not just one thing, but several things that we do. And the staff, the principals, everybody has just been awesome at encouraging. I have subs that talk to me, come from different schools, and they're amazed at our cleaning procedures between classes. One built, you know, some corporations, they don't have anything. One sub told me they have these little tiny wipes and this little thing that if you wanted to use it, you could. And here they come and we have the big spray bottles and the rags and the teachers are going in and cleaning those down between. That is helpful. We're still doing unidirectional locking in our buildings. That's huge. Contact tracing, we're still maintaining active seating charts wherever these kids are in the building. I can follow, when I am handed a case, I can follow a student from classroom to lunch to extracurricular activity, the bus. Just, you know, it's awesome that everybody is keeping these records for us so that we can actually do a nice job of contact tracing. So it's definitely a huge event. Custodians are doing wonderful. You know, it's, it's, it's a whole lot of stuff that we work and look at. Any questions?
And I would also add that at one point, we were getting close to where we couldn't do coverage for staff. It was amazing how many people just pitched in and wanted to make it work and wanted to stay in school. And so that's, that's what we did do. I mean, I've been talking to, I think, staff probably every day for the last week and a half. And, and I have been doing that all along, but I've just really made a concentrated effort to do that. And I have not had one negative, especially when I start talking to them about all of this data and what it has said. And they, they understand why we're still here. And I haven't talked to anybody that says, no, we don't want to be in school. We want to go, go home, except for two students today in study hall who tried to beg me to shut us down. Other than that, I have not had it.
Oh, I have some that try and say they're a close contact. Aren't I a close contact? Well, I didn't see your name. I didn't see your picture in there. But yeah, it's definitely a big team approach. I, and I'll be honest with you, when we started school, I never dreamed we would make it this far. But it is due to everybody's work and diligence is why we've made it.
And may I have a question?
Yes.
And first and foremost, I want to applaud you and the administrators, the teachers, the staff for everything that you've done. I don't think any of us thought we'd get to this point. And here we are and athletics is not living along, but maybe got a little hitch in their giddy up, but they are moving along. And I don't want to sound negative, but I do have a question about what we're doing. So I agree with the stats and the studies and I've looked at a lot of that stuff. And you've just stated that from contact tracing within our school, we've only had four that have contracted COVID from within.
That's just at the high school building?
Yeah, zero at the others. And so.
And one staff, yeah.
And one staff. And so if you do the percentage on that, that's three tenths of a percent. So I'm wondering if we could look at contact tracing differently from within versus from without? Because, you know, if our biggest worry is kids in social gatherings and families in social gatherings and all that, and that's, the percentage of contact tracing there was much higher, could we look at contact tracing differently? If school is truly the safest place for youth or kids and, and we have such a small, small percentage of our kids that have contracted COVID through contact tracing of exposure in school, could we not look at, and then we look at what the CDC said, and after seven days, we're down to 95% chance of not getting it and with a negative test? I'm just saying, holistically, if the best place for these kids is in school... I'm just saying, holistically, if the best place for these kids is in school, why do we have the 14 days if the school is the safest place?
14 days is the life of the virus, is the active of the virus. So once you're infected with the virus, it can do its thing within your body, within 14 days. So that's why it's out there. We have seen it go out to 20 days, and we've, you know, seen people show symptoms and test positive and less than that.
So I'm not disputing that.
Right, right.
I agree with that. My point is the data that we just analyzed, it doesn't seem like we're spreading it within school.
That's where we're at.
And I applaud everybody's efforts. I think that's part of our efforts. And I'm just thinking that, you know, for the emotional, the physical, and the mental well-being, if school's the best place for these kids, 14 days is a long time to be virtual, particularly for students who want to be here. And I'm just adding the data up, saying, we're making a rule with in-contact tracing for 0.03% of our students. And I'm not sure that that's...
Well, you're kind of, I understand what you're saying, but you also have to look at everything as a whole. And these people go back home, they go back to the community, they go out and do their social life outside of school. So some of these, you know, that we've had be close contacts here at school, haven't converted here, but they have at home. Some of these have been siblings that live at home with them. So, you know, it's just, I think, I have not heard or seen any discussion from my webcast that I participate in with the Indiana State Department of Health of differentiating that or pulling that apart, because I think then you're going to create a hole.
It'd be more logistically challenging, I get it, but I think...
Oh, yeah. That would be fun.
If we're in this for the students, it's not a bad thing to look at, just simply because the data is telling us we're not passing it at school.
Well, there is...
It's a much smaller percentage than outside of school.
And kind of to go with that, the CDC has looked and come out with additional recommendations to decrease that contact tracing time or, you know, that quarantine time from 14 days. So if you have somebody out that has been assigned 14 days, they can test at day five, and if they are negative, come back in seven days. They've changed it from a 14 to a seven and a 10 day. Seven with a test, 10 without. But implement those things when you're not hot, you know? That's a crazy time. So that's going to help lower some of that. But I think for that small percentage, that's, it's just...
I guess my overall point is I'm 100% behind what everybody's doing, and I hope it doesn't come across, I'm not so worried. It's just adding everything up, if school's the most safe place, then let's try to keep it in school.
Well, we could all just camp out here and just stay here, night after night, and keep...
Kids that haven't been in contact trace are doing social activities also. I mean, everybody's rolling the dice.
Absolutely.
And so, anyway, I mean, I'm just saying, let's...
Yeah, there is no perfect way. And, you know, I predict down the road, you know, when somebody's writing history on COVID in 2020...
It'd be an interesting read.
Yes, it will be. Why'd they do that and why didn't they do this?
Well, hopefully we'll spend our money in this country in medical, right?
Yeah, I would be, or listen to them.
Can you explain this contact tracing? Student A gets identified as contact tracing and sent home for quarantine, but yet the siblings that you mentioned are sitting at the same tables, sitting on the same couch, and they get to come to school, but the other kid doesn't?
That's because you only do one generation of contact tracing. You don't do multiple generations. So you only contact trace the person who has been exposed. So I'm sitting in class next to John, and John's positive, so I'm identified as being exposed. But my sister, who's in a different class, wasn't even around this person. So we don't know that I have anything. So that would be a second generation contact. So we only do one, just whoever is immediately exposed. Now, then if they convert, then the kids, obviously, the siblings, will get involved.
And that's the CDC's guideline?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I've got another question.
Yes.
M.A., when we're doing the contact tracing, does it matter whether those students that are, say, sitting next to the student that has a positive test, does it matter if they have masks on or not? Or we didn't get that enough?
No, not when we contact trace. The guidelines with that is it doesn't matter if they have a mask or not. You're looking at that six-foot bubble and a cumulative time of 15 minutes in a 24-hour period.
Okay.
To that point, sorry.
So you've got seating charts. I mean, you said there are seating charts even for like extracurricular or if a group gets together, a club gets together and has a discussion, that's being tracked?
Yes, our athletes are working out in pods most of the time. So when I go to Eric and say, hey, I've got this one, he can tell me, or the coaches can tell us, who their core group is that they practice with.
I'm talking about other things, I mean, other like clubs and that kind of thing, is that...
Oh, you're talking...
Like an academic club, but the ones I have seen, actually, social distance, where they're masked.
I would say most of them, yeah. I just, the sponsors that come to me, that I talk to, they're doing their social distancing. Obviously, it depends on their activity that they're going on doing, but I think they're wearing masks and social distancing most of the time, would be. And I swim, I know you guys did pods as well, so... And I know, like, the play practices, they're doing social distancing with that, very much so. They even did some virtual.
So is that something you're looking at, though? I mean, you go to that sponsor or whatever and check with them?
Oh, I get my nose in about everything, sir. As much as I can, as much as I physically and possibly can, I try and understand what everybody's doing and what everybody's got going on. And those, a lot of people come to me and ask me, honestly. I don't have to go looking for it too much. Does that help?
And I can just say, M.A. has put in countless hours, and there's no one here that can't say that she hasn't just went above and beyond for just people in the community, parents who randomly call her on the weekends. So she's done an amazing job. And she is working really well with staff members to make sure that we are keeping everybody safe. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
We have a lot of families, parents, who just call. They don't know who to talk to.
Right.
And they're finding me as a trustworthy person that they can actually ask. And they even ask a lot of the very similar questions that you guys have asked. So I just walk them through it, and they seem to be okay.
Well, I appreciate, Dr. Grimo, you guys doing this tonight, because this is by far and large the majority of phone calls I get right now, is how are they making this decision? And how, you know, what are the statistics? And I want to be honest with you, I don't know who to believe on what. You can't take raw sample data. I mean, you have to use confidence intervals when you're doing prediction about certain things. So I mean, I, you know, we won't get into that, but, you know, we're faced with it. And I think every, you know, it's good to know that you guys have these things in place, because I'm not in the school personally, you know, and I don't, and I can't answer those questions that people ask. And I think it's very critical that we do things like this and communicate in like this so people, you know, in the community know what's going on, because otherwise perception rules the game, and that's usually not positive. So, thank you.
Yep, my pleasure. Good?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You were here the night we honored you, so now we're going to do it tonight, so...
Superintendent comments?
Actually, just a few things. I totaled up our donations, which was $4,800 in donations. And again, with COVID going on, we are so appreciative of anybody willing to donate. And just want to bring to your attention about the athletics, and that's where we're really hurting. So if you could find it in your heart and your wallet, if you can donate to our athletic program, we would really appreciate that. We usually typically rely on gate money, and that's not happening. So just appreciate you thinking of us. And if nothing else, you know, say a kind word to Eric, because he needs it right now. Also want to put in a plug-in for Thursday, next Thursday, Amy at 6:00. It'll be a strategic planning session. We're thinking that we're going to be able to wrap things up and then just rely on focus groups after that. So please come join us if you want to give some input at all on that. We'd love to have you, so that's it.
Thank you, Teresa. School board comments?
Can I, I have one that's kind of business-related. Jeremy, it goes back to the farm lease. Been thinking about that. Is there a cost for the appraisal of that land?
Yeah, I would assume there'll be a cost unless someone's going to donate their time to do that. But yeah, we'll have some type of cost associated with that.
And has that not been appraised? That's not, we just...
I would have to dig in the records and see if it has been. To my knowledge, I don't think it has been.
Will we have the option to approve the four-year lease? Or is that ship sailed tonight?
No, you will ultimately, once we get the bids, you will approve the best bid, once we have. Yeah, so we'll go through the process of getting the property appraised so that we can put that minimum amount on what the bid will be in the notice when it goes out into the newspapers, collect the bids, open them in a public meeting, and then you, the board will award it to the best bid.
Okay, thank you.
That brings up another question. Mr. France, do we have to get that appraised? Or can we use the county appraisal for the farmland? It's not like it's improved property. It's three acres of farmland, and they set the appraisal for a tax rate.
The actual process for bidding the lease out does require appraisals. So we're going to follow that process rather than go with setting our own price? If we're going to bid it out, we should follow the appraisal process, too?
Thank you.
Any idea what that appraisal might cost, Mark?
I have no, sir.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I have one. I would like to thank the three board members who will not be here next month for their service. 16 years is pretty remarkable, four years is pretty remarkable. Wish we'd got to this before Ruth left, but thank you very much for your service.
Same.
I think just lastly, I'd just like to say thank you to our staff and administration, M.A. hire, nurse, I mean, M.A., I mean, the bus drivers, the custodians, the food service folks over the years. Just can't say enough about their service and the level of excellence that they made in MCS. And I've always been very proud of it when I was out and representing us, that I was representing a great class program. So appreciate all of you for that. So lastly, excuse me, I want to wish your opponent a very Merry Christmas and have a happy new year. And we're adjourned.